Good evening, Tuckahoe. I hope this is working. I hope this is -- everyone can hear me out there? Wonderful. Thank you. Welcome to the Monday, November 14th, meeting of the Board of Trustees. And I would actually like to invite the Explorers, if they would please come up to the mic, and would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight? Thank you.
(inaudible)
Will the clerk please call a roll?
President.
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 President. Tonight, we have a presentation from the Community Fund, our friends at the Community Fund. It's the Community Fund of Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tuckahoe. And so at this time, I'd like to call up Gail Haller, who is one of the program directors, I guess. I don't -- not sure if I have that exactly right.
I'm president.
Oh, I'm sorry.
President of the board.
Even better.
That's okay. You don't need to apologize. First of all, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present to you tonight. As you said, I'm Gail Haller, president of the Community Fund. And at this time every year, we send out our appeal letter to residents of Tuckahoe, Eastchester, and Bronxville, and ask the community for their support. This is the only time of year that we solicit funds on behalf of our agencies. Our theme -- our campaign theme this year is be a part of something special. And as probably all of you know, the Community Fund is really something very special in our towns. Since 1919, the Community Fund has supported qualified agencies and programs that provide vital services supporting families, education, seniors, health, and youth in our three towns. Their services have helped thousands of our neighbors at little or no expense to those least able to pay. With declining government support, these agencies need the help of the Community Fund more than ever. Today, through the generous support of our communities, the funds raised support 26 social service agencies and programs that provide services directly to residents of Tuckahoe, Eastchester, and Bronxville. And some of those agencies are very well-known, others are not as familiar to community members. But all of them provide targeted services to all of our members of our community. Without the help of the Community Fund, many of these agencies would not be able to provide support to families and individuals in our community. Supporting the Community Fund really is local giving for local needs. And what kind of needs do we have? Let me give you a few examples. Supporting the Community Fund means a frail 82-year-old woman will have an escort to her medical appointments. A working mother can hold down a job because her four-year-old daughter is provided with quality daycare services. A disabled teenager will receive therapeutic recreation programs. And if you've ever needed an ambulance, you probably rode in a Community Fund-purchased ambulance. But instead of listening to me talk about what needs there are in our community, I'd actually like to bring up a young man, a Tuckahoe resident named Jamar Harrison. He is the senior sergeant of Explorer Post 2008, and he will explain how the Community Fund has made a difference in his life. Jamar, would you come up, please?
Hello. I'm Jamar Harrison. I'm a senior sergeant of Explorer Post 2008, and I'm a junior at Tuckahoe High School. I would like to tell you guys about the Explorer Program and how it's helped me and my peers. Law enforcement Explorer Program was launched in 2008 and is open to the youth from 14 to 20 who reside in Tuckahoe, Bronxville, or Eastchester, and are interested in becoming a law enforcement or interested in learning different variety of skills. The program gives someone like me an opportunity to learn skills needed to become a police officer and a better leader in my community. The Explorers meet every other Wednesday at the Tuckahoe Police Department, and we receive instructions on police curriculum. For example, we learn things like first aid, traffic stops, how to handle domestic disputes, accident investigation, drill-in ceremony, marching. Because of our training, we compete, and we have won medals in northeast regional law enforcement competitions. We also serve our community. Because of our training, we assisted the Tuckahoe Police Department on traffic control and various community events. We help with all the preparation and execution of the Cops for Kids Community Family Day. We actively support our police officers with the National Night Out Against Crime and a lot more things. What the Explorer Program has done for me and my peers, it's helped me a lot. I've matured. I've became a better leader. I'm doing a lot better in school, and my leadership skills have grown tremendously. It's prepared me for my future because I also want to become a police officer. Without the continued support of the Community Fund, it would be extremely difficult for this program to continue operating. Please give the Community Fund some programs like the Explorer Post 2008 so we can continue to help youth in our communities with strong leaders of the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jamar. That was really terrific. I'd like to conclude that we are just really so grateful for the support of residents in Tuckahoe, Eastchester, and Bronxville over the years. It really humbles us who are on the board of the Community Fund to have such a generous community. So in closing, just please support the Community Fund this year. We would be really grateful for your support so our agencies can continue the life-changing services that they provide our three communities. So thank you very much for the time. We appreciate it.
Thank you for coming, and we look forward to seeing that thermometer sign on our fence.
(inaudible).
Okay, good. And we look forward to seeing that red go all the way to the top, so thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate that. While moving on to our regular course of business tonight, we have no public hearings this evening. I'm going to call for the adoption of the minutes. This is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 24th, 2011. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Justice Giordano.
In favor.
Justice Quigley.
In favor.
Justice Luizzi.
In favor.
Justice Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor.
In favor. Next is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of November 2nd, 2011. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Do we have any correspondences tonight? We do not. We have no appointments tonight, so this is our first opportunity for the public to address the board on any agenda items. And seeing we have nobody looking to address the board, I'm going to start with our resolutions. This is Resolution Number One, Ratifying Village Board Action Authorizing the Use of the Trolley for Two Coddle School Trips to the Generoso Pope Foundation on October 27th and November 3rd. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Justice Giordano.
In favor.
Justice Quigley.
In favor.
Justice Luizzi.
In favor.
Justice Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor.
In favor. Resolution Number Two is Ratifying Village Board Action Authorizing the Closure of Marble Dale Road from Lincoln Avenue to Stewart Avenue on October 31st from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for Westchester Park's Neighborhood Annual Halloween Parade. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Justice Giordano.
In favor.
Justice Quigley.
In favor.
Justice Luizzi.
In favor.
Justice Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor.
In favor. Resolution Number Three is Approving the Andrus Family Organization Request for Use of the Village Trolley and Driver on Thursday, December 1st from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock, going from Tuckahoe Sign One Country Club in Eastchester down here to Village Hall, which is the new home of the Andrus Family Organization, happy to say. So do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Justice Giordano.
In favor.
Justice Quigley.
In favor.
Justice Luizzi.
In favor.
Justice Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor.
In favor. Resolution Number Four is Approving the Fire Department's Request to Utilize the Community Center as a polling place for the fire district's 2011 annual election, which will be held on Tuesday, December 13th between the hours of 2:00 and 9:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Justice Giordano.
In favor.
Justice Quigley.
In favor.
Justice Luizzi.
In favor.
Justice Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor.
In favor. Resolution Number Five is Approving Payment of Vouchers in the Amount of $469,281, consisting of Abstract Number 23 for $263,836, Abstract Number 24 for $4,159, Abstract 25 for $187,782, and Abstract Number 26 for $11,503. The three largest invoices paid were $101,934 for employee health insurance premiums for the month of November, $17,594 for electric charges for the month of September, and $9,865 for a state share of fines and fees collected by the justice court for the month of September. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Justice Giordano.
In favor.
Justice Quigley.
In favor.
Justice Luizzi.
In favor.
Justice Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor.
In favor. Resolution Number Six is Approving a Tax Surchairy Settlement in the Amount of $88,199.86 for the years 2005 through 2011, these tax years for the Crestwood Station Plaza Company, Section 42, Block 9, Lot 15, also known as 273 Columbus Avenue. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Justice Giordano.
In favor.
Justice Quigley.
In favor.
Justice Luizzi.
In favor.
Justice Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor.
In favor. We have a series of resolutions tonight that pertain to a ban that we're going to be securing for reimbursement for some expenses that we've approved in the past year. So the first one is Resolution Number Seven, dated November 14th, 2011 -- that's a correction there, by the way -- 2011, of the Village of Tuckahoe, County of Westchester, State of New York, as to the secret determination. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Justice Giordano.
In favor.
Justice Quigley.
In favor.
Justice Luizzi.
In favor.
Justice Hayes.
Question.
Pardon me?
I have a question.
Oh, sure.
Is this the first of the two that we're looking at?
This is just the secret resolution.
Okay. So it's not the ban?
No, this is a secret resolution.
Okay, I'm sorry. In favor.
Sorry.
Mayor.
In favor. Resolution Number Eight is Bond Resolution, dated November 14th, 2011, authorizing the issuance of up to $296,820 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the costs of the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of improvements to prevent the encroachment of and damage from floodwaters in and for the village. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Actually, I just --
Pertain to the Yonkers Avenue Project.
You have to put this in plain English.
I was just going to jump in there.
Yes.
This is actually -- what we're doing is we're -- we had what's called in-kind contribution, which means that when we took on the Yonkers Avenue Project, we had an obligation to go ahead and put up some of our own money, as well as some of our work and some village resources. And we did take that work on. We actually did make those payments. So what we're doing now, when we wrote the check for those payments, we basically just wrote it out of our village fund balance. And now what we're doing is we're -- we had intended all along to eventually borrow this money, and that's what we're doing tonight, so.
Justice Giordano.
In favor?
Justice Quigley.
In favor.
Justice Luizzi.
In favor.
Justice Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor.
In favor. Resolution Number Nine is Bond Resolution, dated November 14th, 2011, authorizing the issuance of up to $198,900 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the costs and the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of parking improvements in and for the village. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion? I will tell you that this amount of money is specifically for -- without asking the treasurer to come up. This is for the parking lot paving that we've done outside here. I'm looking at our treasurer, as well as the retaining wall that we had to replace outside. And it has been the village's position that half the expense of that retaining wall is actually an expense of the adjacent property owner. So we -- if we haven't already done so, we will be sending him an invoice for half of the value of that retaining wall project. And when we do receive that, we'll be able to prepay a portion of this amount of money that we're borrowing.
Justice Giordano.
In favor?
Justice Quigley.
In favor.
Justice Luizzi.
In favor.
Justice Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor.
In favor. Resolution Number Ten is Bond Resolution, dated November 14th, 2011, authorizing the issuance of up to $313,340 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the costs of the payment of judgments and settled claims resulting from tax surchairy proceedings brought against to Article 7 of the New York Real Property Tax Law. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? This is all the tax certs that we have been paying back over the past six months or so, I guess, now.
Justice Giordano.
In favor?
Justice Quigley.
In favor.
Justice Luizzi.
In favor.
Justice Hayes.
Abstain?
Mayor.
In favor. Resolution Number Eleven is Bond Resolution, dated November 14th, 2011, authorizing the issuance of up to $54,100 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the costs of the acquisition of motor vehicles for the village. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion? What this is -- $54,000 is actually the value of two police vehicles. And what we have discussed this today, we're actually going to have a meeting with the chief and his vehicle maintenance -- fleet maintenance individual. And we're going to meet between now and our next meeting to discuss the scheduling of replacement of vehicles, fleet maintenance of vehicles, and things of that nature so we can actually make a little better informed decision as to how many vehicles we should be looking to purchase and lifespan of vehicles. We needed to get this taken care of tonight, but the actual author -- giving the chief authorization to go out and purchase vehicles wouldn't occur until at least the next meeting.
Justice Giordano.
In favor?
Justice Quigley.
In favor.
Justice Luizzi.
In favor.
Justice Hayes.
Abstain? Can I make a brief comment?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to let the public know and the chief know and the board know that the reason why I'm abstaining. I just felt I've reviewed the information over this past weekend, and I just thought that I would like to have a little bit more time to sit down and review the entire fleet and the whole assessment as a whole before I made a decision yes, no, or indifferent. So that's just the reason why I'm abstaining this evening.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mayor.
In favor. This brings us to our department reports to the board, and I'm going to call on Chief Costanza. Chief, before you start, can I -- I just want to mention one thing. I actually had a neighbor -- I live on Marble Dale Road, up on a little bit north of Fisher Avenue, and a neighbor actually approached my wife today and mentioned that -- I don't know if this is -- I'm actually making this report to you tonight live. Apparently, there's been somebody who's been going through some of the garbage bags looking for credit card receipts. Is this something you've heard anywhere else, or is this unisolated?
Well, it certainly is a problem, and that's why we suggest that any kind of financial information gets shredded and not put into the garbage. However, we ask that if neighbors see it happening while it's happening, they let us know right away so we could go and --
Yeah, they noticed the bags, like, in the morning. They noticed -- they put them out at night, and then in the morning, they noticed that they were open and there were actually some -- you know, you get those credit card offers, you throw them in the garbage.
Right.
So, yes, I think it's very wild.
Yeah, it is definitely a problem, and that's how a lot of the scams occur, when they get those applications and they fill them out, and that's how identity theft -- that's a method of how that crime occurs. So we ask and we recommend that people do shred those applications and anything that has to do with your finances.
Thank you.
But in that -- with that being said, if, you know, it is always helpful to us if someone -- if a neighbor sees someone either going through the garbage, or if they realize that their garbage had been, you know, accessed that way, that they let us know right away so that we could start backtracking if the stuff is still left at the curb to see if he's in, you know, in the same neighborhood.
I think it just happened yesterday, so I'll give you the address later on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of quick announcements. First is that probably shortly after Thanksgiving, we will start to turn the alternate side of street parking signs because the alternate side is not in effect during the winter months during snow removal, so -- and the street sweeper generally doesn't go out when the weather gets cold. So I ask that neighbors start to look and pay attention for when those signs get turned, and then often they're replaced with either snow zone signs for the majority of the village, and in some instances, there's no parking December 15th to March 1st. So we ask that they start paying attention to the parking regulations because they will change in the next couple of weeks. And then just a very quick announcement, and mayor, you joined us yesterday. We were very, very honored to be recognized by the Emmanuel AME Church, six van do's in place. They honored the police department, and they gave us a beautiful plaque of appreciation for our services to the community, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful service. So I just wanted to -- we thanked them personally yesterday, but publicly, I wanted to thank the Reverend Dr. Cosmos Bonaparte, Reverend Douglas Edmund, Assistant Pastor, and Reverend Alicia Carpenter, Assistant to the Pastor, and all the congregants, the youth choir. It was just a beautiful, beautiful, uplifting service, and I wanted to thank them not only for the recognition, but for the fellowship and the hospitality that they showed us. It was a great, great day.
It was very nice. It's always good to get a little extra blessing, too.
Absolutely. We need all the prayers we could get. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you, chief.
Any other questions from the board?
Chief, last question, talking about the going through the garbage. Is my understanding that even when residents put their recyclables out at the curb, metal, what have you? I don't know if this is your question or Mr. DeMarco's question, that people are not entitled to go through that either?
There's a -- in our ordinance, it talks about going through the trash, that it's actually a violation of the village code. I'm not certain about the recyclables, though. Maybe Frank can answer that?
Well, I don't know if you'd really say it's stealing, but, you know, I have a father and a daughter and a kid coming through my trash, and again, I wouldn't call it stealing, you know, especially my recyclables. I actually give it to them. So anybody could say I'm wrong, well, I'll accept that.
Okay.
You want to stay up here, Frank?
No, the -- I think I remember reading somewhere that once that is put out at the curb, it is the property of the village.
Especially with the metals. You know, we did have someone coming around stealing metals. I mean, to run off with a refrigerated door or stove, I'd look at that differently. But recyclables is only a couple of cents here and there.
Okay.
Actually, let me just follow -- John, that's the attorney. Do we have an ordinance, or is that a common type of an ordinance that other villages and municipalities might have regarding taking things out of recycling bins?
It's the state of the law, as Trustee Luizzi indicated. He's exactly correct, that once it's put out curbside, it's technically the property of the village, and that's the state of the law in New York State. I could check our local codes. As the chief mentioned, it is a violation to rummage through it with respect to trash and refuse. I don't believe we have anything on the books with respect to the rummaging through recyclables.
I know they get a lot of nickel bottles out of my recycling bin, so they actually empty it, I think, each week.
Mayor, board members. Obviously, you know, everybody's familiar with the storm of October 28th. Really took me by surprise, and I'm sure many others. During that storm, we had nine transformers out, 75 percent of the village out of power, many road closures, trees, limbs over roads, wires, and homes. Actually, it looked like a tornado touched down on the village. It looked horrible. We had Con Edison representative assigned to us, a Mr. Vinay Shah, who's a liaison for the village from Con Edison, very receptive. I've dealt with Con Edison many years, and I've never had a crew help us the way they did. I think they had scheduled a crew from Van Nuys Bronx to come up and give us a hand or give Con Edison a hand, and unbelievable the work that they've done. And a lot of it was even on their own time. I know they were supposed to work 12-hour shifts, and this crew that I work with stayed an additional two hours to work with Tuckahoe and Bronxville residents. They weren't even assigned to Bronxville, and they worked their way into Bronxville just to aid residents that were coming out just begging for help. It was interesting to see. It was great to understand and watch. 99 percent of the villagers were stored between a 12- and 15-hour timeframe, which I thought was pretty amazing compared to what was going around around the county, and 1 percent within a 24-hour period. I want to thank them again. Leaf pickup. I found this pretty amazing. I got a call from a resident last week, and he said, "Frank, we got a problem here. We have a lady that's about four foot 11 with a black dress with a scarf on her head, wildly swinging a rake back and forth, running after your leaf men." I had to go to see this, but I couldn't understand it. But on the way there, I realized what it was. My leaf man -- I just want everybody to understand that when a leaf truck comes down the road, they could only do one side at a time, and then they work their route and they come back the other way because the truck could only pick up leaves on one side. It can't pick up leaves on both sides. So if you see this lady running down the road, please give me a call. Calendars. We're working on a first-ever sanitation and recycling calendar. It's also recycling at a glance. We're trying to make it easy to read, easy to understand for everybody. We do get quite a bit of calls. Recycling, proper put-out days for curbs, metals, e-waste. It's going to be easy to read, very descriptive, and the dos and don'ts of sanitation and recycling. With the bedbug infestation running rampant in the county, beginning January of 2012, the village will enforce a local ordinance mandating that all mattresses and box rooms be covered with plastic bags and sealed prior to placement on the curb. If you have any questions with this, you know, please give me a call. The bags could be purchased at, I think, the moving facilities, Cornell's Hardware, Westies, and Storage Deluxe, which is, I think, now called Cube Smart.
Mm-hmm.
And that's really it. I also want to thank the Army Corps, Karen Ashton. You know, she doesn't have to be here tonight, and she comes to all these meetings. here tonight and she comes to all these meetings, she's always there when I need her, and she's always there when everybody needs her. And you know, she's a great liaison for us in between the contractor and the village. So, I want to personally thank her. And finally, I just want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, happy and safe.
Same to you, thank you.
I also wanted to thank the departments, I know the police department and the Department of Public Works. You know, when they're out there in the storms, they really work well together. It's really interesting to watch because you really don't see it everywhere. And thanks out to them also.
They did a fantastic job. I learned a few things in this storm. You know, as you said, seeing the two departments work together, they worked very well together. On my street, we even had evac there if there was a tree that came down and clocked a guy in the head. So, I mean, everyone was there pitching in. It was like fireworks, the way the limbs were cracking and dropping everywhere, everywhere you walked. So, your department did a great job and you're absolutely right. One of the things I learned with Con Ed is the county has, they set up an emergency command, they have an emergency command center and they set up a call-in line, which they have two call-ins per day. And I called in on the early line and when they, they start to scroll through each municipality and when I said that we didn't have at that time, we didn't have a liaison, they said, well, hold on, we'll get you one. And that guy came down that afternoon, it was Sunday, he came down. And that was pretty good, I'll tell you what. And that guy, just to be able to have a municipal representative, I had his cell phone, he called me at my house at ten o'clock at night, mayor, is everything okay, you know, is, just, just to be able to have somebody that I could call when I got a call from you or a resident saying, my power is still out up here in Highview or on Park or at the different locations on Fisher Avenue where the outages were, just to be able to talk to a Con Ed rep who could then tell me, you know what, whether you liked it or not, he at least gave us the information. It was going to be another ten hours or another twelve hours. And at the end of the day, that's all the residents, they just want the information. You know what? It may be bad news, maybe you're going to be out for another day, but they just want to hear it. And to me, that was so important, especially in this storm. That's, you know, it was cold, it was very cold and these people didn't have power, so fortunately, they got their power back on in pretty short order. There's a few people that, like you said, one percent who actually had to wait until, I guess Wednesday or maybe Wednesday or Thursday was the latest, but to be able to have that line of communication with Con Ed was very, very helpful.
Yeah, we were well-informed.
Yeah. It was, worked out well for us. Can't say the same for Connecticut, but it worked out well for Tuckahoe.
Okay.
Thank you, Frank. Anything from our treasurer tonight?
Evening, Mayor. Members of the board, you had wanted me to just go over simply the characteristics of a ban to let the villagers know. A ban, bond anticipation note basically is a vehicle whereby municipalities can obtain short-term funding for capital projects and capital purchases, generally with the intention in the future of issuing a bond and using those proceeds to pay off the ban. Some of the characteristics of a ban, a ban by law needs to be retired at the end of a five-year period, either by paying it off in full or by converting it to a serial bond. However, in the budgeting process, it should be noted that in the first year, the village has the option of not making a ban payment. So, that the first year, you would renew the ban at the full amount and then pay it off in years two through five. Another favorable characteristic of a ban is if the village were to obtain a windfall of any kind, the ban can be paid off in full at the maturity date without any penalty or any extra interest. Bans are generally issued and they're favorable because very rarely are bonds issued for a five-year period. And generally, if you want to issue a bond and you want it to be a callable bond where you can call it prior to maturity, results in a higher interest rate and a payoff amount. Do the board have any questions? Basically, ban one oh one.
We've done this before in the past, too, I know, on numerous occasions.
Correct.
We've had where we'll actually have more than one ban over a period of a year or a couple of years and then we'll roll those into a serial-
That is correct.
A ten or a fifteen or a twenty-year bond, which then, it takes longer, can you tell us that, if I remember right, it takes longer and it's more expensive to secure the bond?
It's a more formal process.
Okay.
The underwriting costs are more expensive. The bans are cheaper and another positive characteristic of a ban is if you start a project and you estimate the price at five hundred thousand, you can borrow the five hundred thousand, but you're not always sure that that's going to be the price. Say you need an extra three hundred and fifty thousand at a later date, you can always issue another ban for that to obtain the entire funding and then roll that over into a bond sometime in the future. And sometimes when you want to do a bond, the items you want to include, but you just don't know what they are yet. And you may have a project that's shovel-ready and you would like to have the cash to begin right away, so again, the ban will give you that. And then at the end, again, you can have the option of rolling it over into a bond.
Okay. And five years is the maximum for a ban?
Five years by law is the max that you can have a bond outstanding. Either needs to be fully retired or it needs to be converted to a serial bond.
And the interest rate is probably a little bit higher on a ban because of-
Actually, short-term interest rates from what I'm reading are a little bit lower.
Oh, really?
The difference between the bond, if you issue a fifteen-year-old bond, you're going to get a debt service schedule, it's going to lay out the interest rate.
Right.
The principal and interest payments over the life of the fifteen years.
It's like getting a mortgage.
For chance, exactly. We got a bond at a five percent rate, but the interest rates went down, you're stuck with the five percent. With the ban, it's, when you roll it over, it's a separate negotiating process. But then, if you issued the ban at a low interest rate and rates go up, then you will pay a higher amount-
Right.
Upon, you know, reissuing the ban and rolling it over.
Okay. Thank you, John. Any of the other board members have any?
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Under miscellaneous business, our next village board meeting is going to be Monday, December twelfth. Just to let everybody know that village offices and DPW will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-fourth in observance of Thanksgiving holiday and village offices only will be closed on Friday, the day after Thanksgiving. Our Winter Fest celebration is coming up and it is going to start on Saturday, December third, and that will be from four to eight P.M. We're going to have holiday music and ice skating and tree lighting and caroling right down here in Depot Square. On Sunday, the day after, Sunday, December fourth, from noon till six o'clock, again, we're going to have ice skating, live entertainment with holiday music, and the reindeer are going to be back, which is pretty good there, pretty cool. If you haven't had a chance to see that, come on down. And the reindeer will be in town from noon till four o'clock and as always, we'll have the hay ride from one to four o'clock as well. We're going to have the Crestwood Holiday Fest, which is going to be held in Crestwood by the train station at the foot of Fisher Avenue at the corner of Fisher and Columbus. And that is going to be on Saturday, December tenth, from eleven A.M. to two P.M. We will have holiday music and the reindeer are going to come back again and entertain the kids up there. And then, we're going to have something kind of fun this year, which we're going to have caroling throughout the village on our trolley. We're going to set up the P.A. system on the trolley and we're going to have, we have carolers who, Sue, where are the carolers from? I forget.
They have one at the Asbury Music Theater.
Asbury Music Theater. So, they'll be riding on the trolley and that's going to be on Sunday, December eighteenth at six thirty P.M. They're going to start right here in front of Village Hall and again on Tuesday, December twentieth. So, that's going to be pretty neat. They're going to be riding throughout the village and singing for everyone in the village. So, that's, that's kind of neat, I think, for doing that this year. And that brings us to our trustee member reports and we'll start off with Deputy Mayor Tom Gierdahl.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. Just a few announcements, the next zoning board meeting has been scheduled for December fourteenth at seven P.M. The schedule has not yet been provided. However, we do know that the Crestwood Plaza variance petition, application for multi-family residential with commercial component has been adjourned pending resolution of that same property in front of the planning board. The work session will be a week before, so that would be on December, sorry, that's on the same night, so that'll be December fourteenth at six P.M. The planning board meeting is tomorrow evening, Tuesday, at seven thirty P.M. On the agenda is Crestwood Station Plaza LLC, which is seeking site plan approval, sixteen Chestnut Street, which is seeking architectural review for one and two families, one fifty, one sixty, and two thirty-three Main Street, which is seeking approval for multi-family residential facility with a commercial component, one eighty-one Marble Dale Road, which is a proposed car wash location, one hundred Marble Dale Road is seeking site plan review for an auto, for the auto repair facility, and one hundred Marble Dale Road is also seeking a subdivision for a new warehouse. The work session has already taken place, so this would just be for the meeting. That's it.
Thank you very much. Trustee Quigley?
Some news from the Eastchester-Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce, welcoming three new members this past month. First is Ellen Decole Consulting Services, Home Inventory Professional Services in Eastchester, T-Mobile of Tuckahoe, obviously in Tuckahoe, and Raven Capital Growth Corporation in Scarsdale, all new members of the Eastchester-Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce. Couple of events coming up in December twelfth at the old Stone Mill Restaurant here in Tuckahoe will be the December Holiday Party. And what promises to be a very fun night is a comedy night that this chamber is sponsoring on January nineteenth at Fogarty's in Bronxville. Details on all these events and the chamber itself can be found on their, on the website, on the village website at the chamber link. As always, lots going on in the library. Some of the highlights are the adult book club, the book they're reading this month is Cutting for Stone by Abraham Vergasi. They'll be meeting on Thursday, November seventeenth at eleven A.M. and Monday, November twenty-first at six thirty P.M. Computer classes on November sixteenth, December seventh and fourteenth at eleven in the morning. There's a memoir writing workshop on December first at noon. And what promises to be actually quite interesting, the author David Carroturo has a book called Camelot Nation, Going All In to Save His Country. This is a fiction book, just looking at the brief description, it involves politics, the Tea Party, billionaire, the World Series of Poker, and somehow, these are all mixed in to make what looks like a very entertaining book. He's going to be at the Tuckahoe Library on Monday, December twelfth at seven o'clock to talk about the book. So, this should be something that I think would be quite interesting. And then other news with the library, the director Debbie Capola, who has been here for about thirteen years now, is retiring from the library. She'll be finishing up at the end of December. Having been here for thirteen years, Debbie literally shepherded and oversaw the transition of our library into truly a twenty-first century library. It's an amazing amount of technical and technological changes that have gone on in libraries over these past thirteen years and she has kept Tuckahoe at pace and probably in the forefront of what libraries really should be offering. In addition, of course, usual books, there's tremendous circulation of video and audio materials, ebooks are coming to the library, you'll be hearing more about that in the next couple of months. And what's probably most impressive is the range and variety and number of programs that the library sponsors on a monthly basis. All this has been developed over the number of years and with Debbie as a director. And just very briefly, looking at November, we've got a computer class, a memoir writing class, several storytimes, there's a Native American celebration, there's a teen advisory board, there's a kids craft class, there's a workshop in long-term care, there's musical presentations, we even have paws and tails therapy dogs that will be bringing dogs into the library for the kids to get to know and to read with. There's an adult book group, as I mentioned, there's Japanese storytimes. There's just so much going on at our library and a lot of it is, I certainly think is due to the great work, the innovation and the initiative of Debbie Capola as the director. She'll be missed, but I've been assured I was at the meeting tonight of the library board and they are working hard at searching for a replacement for Debbie who will be picking up the reins in the, starting in January of two thousand and twelve. So, Debbie will be missed, but the library is in great shape now and I think she's laid the groundwork for a continued wonderful future for our library. And especially, as you've heard mentioned a couple of times now, two thousand and twelve is the hundredth anniversary of the Tuckahoe Public Library and there'll be a lot of events going on around that. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. It's a nice report about Debbie, too. Thank you. Trustee Louiezi?
Thank you, Mayor. For the seniors, the annual bazaar that they held back in October was a success and so much so that it will help them to sustain the programs that they hope to continue throughout the year. Again, I'd like to remind the residents that the Senior Citizens Council is holding a parking space raffle. The tickets are available here at Village Hall or at the Tuckahoe Senior Center located on Four Union Place. The winner of the raffle ticket will be able to choose an available parking space in one of the six commuter lots in Tuckahoe. The drawing will be held on December twelfth at eight P.M. right here at our meeting.
That's correct.
And again, I reach out to the seniors of the village as well as their children, please, if you can, have them sign up and be a member of the Tuckahoe Senior Center. You can either contact myself here at Village Hall or the senior director, Barbara Stires, at three three seven eight four eight seven. I believe, it's not official yet, but the school, in terms of school news, I believe that the two thousand and eleven baseball team will be receiving their championship rings on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. A time to be determined. And lastly, I'd like to plug the community fund in the sense that our local star, Bobby Monahan, who graduated from Eastchester High School, will be bartending at Mickey Spillane's on November twentieth from September, from seven to nine P.M. And what Bobby will do is donate the evening tips in support of the community fund. So, if you're a fan of Saturday Night Live, it's a good opportunity for you to stop down at Mickey Spillane's and say hello to one of our local heroes, if you will, and also be able to support the community fund. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now, trustee Hayes?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. A few announcements this evening. Our next committee is scheduled for this Wednesday, November fourteenth at seven thirty P.M. here at Village Hall. And then our next environmental committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December seventh at seven thirty P.M. And I just wanted to give a brief update on what our environmental committee is currently working on. The group is working on a partnership with our high school environmental studies class to review and discuss the process and possibility of a larger-scale recycling program within all three of our schools. In addition, we're working out arrangements to set up a brief field trip for the class to visit our DPW yard so that the students can see firsthand the many initiatives that have been put in place on the village scale level and positive impacts they have had, which includes, of course, our veggie orbit trucks and showing the students how they run pure on vegetable oil, in addition to the rain gardens in place and the many other green initiatives. And I believe the date we're working out that field trip is right after Thanksgiving. I think it's the Monday after Thanksgiving, so I look forward to running down and meeting the class and joining them for a half hour or so as they attend or come visit our yard. In addition, I wanted to mention another reminder regarding our beautification committee. The committee is working on their annual fundraising raffle event and this upcoming year has a special meaning because it is going to be beautification's twentieth anniversary. The committee is currently selling five hundred raffle tickets only and there are three cash prizes which will be raffled off at our upcoming village Winter Fest celebration on Sunday, December fourth. And anyone, of course, can purchase a raffle ticket for twenty dollars or three for fifty. And anyone can either contact our village clerk's office or myself for further details. And finally, Tuckahoe Beautification did recently receive a letter from one of our local residents and I've been asked if I could read it at our village board meeting this evening, so I was just going to take a minute to read it.
Sure.
Dear Tuckahoe Beautification, along with my best wishes and warmest congratulations, I extend my heartfelt gratitude for all you have done to transform our beloved village into a magical kingdom. I know it wasn't as simple as waving a magic wand, but it is still a Cinderella story and our hearts are truly grateful. Your devoted service and dedication to beautification of Tuckahoe is truly amazing and inspiring. Thank you for your blessings, blessing our lives with your goodness and love and careful display of beauty and grace all year long. Your magical touches are everywhere and I can almost see the fairy dust twinkling as I drive through the village enchanted and charmed with every turn. Thank you again, dear hearts, and happy anniversary. I pray God will continue to bless you in all of your endeavors and watch over and protect you and your beautiful families. With loving gratitude, Elaine Pagliori. P.S., good luck with the raffle. So, I thought that was nice.
Thank you very much. First thing I'm going to do on my report is to ask Karen Ashton if she'd please come on up. And Karen is our representative from the United States Army Corps of Engineers, which is the division handling the Yonkers Avenue roadway project, so this is your opportunity to give us some good news. We always like to see you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for having me. I do have some good news. It's, it's slow-
Yes, thank you for having me. I do have some good news. It's, it's slow coming. I think last where we left off, we had, we had awarded the contract modification and ordered the steel. The steel has been fabricated, so that is the update. The connectors for the steel has, have also been delivered, and they're in the process of welding and coating. And the coating is the part where, where it's weather-dependent. So that's where we are right now. I got a update on Friday about this, and they said two to four weeks. So when I come to next month's board meeting, it should be even better news. That would mean the mobilization of the base contract or contractor would be mobilizing that same week. Everything's prepared, everything's ready to go. It was just a matter of waiting on the steel at this point. But we don't have any funding issues, we don't have any scheduling issues, just waiting for the steel to show. So we just keep our fingers crossed for good weather, and then we can go.
On the holiday, I was gonna, I meant to, I didn't mean to interrupt you there, but what you're talking about, a month from now is gonna set us in the middle of December. Do you allow them to cease work during Christmas and New Years? Or what's your requirements of the contractor? So they can work every day? I mean, what, how does that work?
They get the same federal holidays as every federal worker does. So they just get, I think this year, it's just the day after Christmas. So the 26th, they would not be required to work. They could work if they wanted to. And also January 2nd, those are the only two days.
But they can't turn around and say, "Hey, we're gonna take the whole week off," or something like that?
No, not, not in accordance with their contract.
Right.
They're still required, as soon, as soon as they start, they're required to submit us a schedule, which is a Gantt chart, showing where each process is going. So if they're ahead of schedule and they wanna take that week off, you know, I guess that would be, we couldn't really tell them, "Well, now that you're taking a week off, you have to be done a week earlier."
Mm-hmm.
They're allowed six months of actual construction, but we're, we're estimating about four months of, of actual construction. They have every motivation to get this constructed as quickly as possible because of requirements by their bid-bond company.
Right.
So there is just as much motivation for them to get this started and finished as it is for the village and for us as well.
Yeah, it's my understanding that they basically can't undertake any other projects until they, until we release them from this project.
They can't even bid.
Yeah, that's right. So if that isn't motivation for them to get the job done quickly, I don't know what is.
Yeah.
So that's good. I'm, you know, that's the silver lining, I think, in, in this project.
And I also will have, unfortunately, I didn't have it for today, but the steel company indicated that by tomorrow afternoon, they would have an updated schedule, have a more, more better, that's not a good word, but a better idea of exactly when they'll be finished.
Great.
So I'll be able to forward that to you tomorrow, as long as I get it tomorrow, I can forward it.
Wonderful.
In the meantime, we're still working on the options. I think last time I was here, we were going to be doing the negotiations on the 8th. The further I looked into it, I wanted to be more prepared with it. I didn't like their crew size, I didn't like their rates, I don't like the amount of hours. So I had to dig in a little bit deeper. So I felt it my fiduciary duty to take a little bit more time before. And it doesn't stop the, the base construction contract, it doesn't delay anything, it doesn't add any time because they can work.
Those are the betterments that come after the, this contractor finishes his work, so.
Or at the, at the same time.
Right.
If they do it afterwards, it would not require Yonkers Avenue to be closed.
To be closed.
Maybe a little bit of inconvenience at that private parking area right there. But, but that'll be about it. They won't have to close the road. So.
Great.
Things are moving. I wish I could say they were starting tomorrow, but.
Well, thank you very much for bringing this up to speed. You'll come again next month, too?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any of the board members have any questions for Karen this month? Okay. Thank you very much.
The only other item I want to talk about is we've, we had a special meeting where we talked about, we have a new tenant here at Village Hall, the Andrews Family Programs. And they'll be mobilizing on-site for some demolition work in the space downstairs that they're gonna be occupying, the upstairs third floor. It doesn't need a lot of renovations, doesn't seem like to me, but they will be retrofitting that space to suit their needs. And one of the requirements that we had as their landlord was to create an ADA ramp, access ramp, for people to get into the building on the back of Village Hall. And I just wanna really give kudos to Frank and his department. We have a masonry, a very small, two, two-man, but it expands when it has to, masonry team here in the village. And I'll tell you, a lot of residents get to see the fruits of their labor, and it's, you know what? It's just very visible what they do. And anybody gets a chance, come on to the back of Village Hall here and take a look at a set of stairs that they actually cut into the wall in the back, as well as the ramp that is, the new ramp, that runs right along the back of Village Hall and turns right into the building. I'll tell you what, I put those guys up against any professional mason construction company out there. So they did a great job. Our facilities manager actually wrote them a letter, and he's a little rough around the edges. I don't think I've ever seen him write a letter like that, saying, you know, to, for you to tell those guys that they did a great job. So please, please let them know. They did a fantastic job out there. And they were actually working on the day of, well, they started work the day of the snowstorm. And I know you had to call them out to go ahead and plow, plow the streets. I can't believe I'm saying that. In October, we had to plow the streets. But, so they, they worked in some pretty harsh conditions out there, but they did a great job. And they brought it in well faster than we anticipated. So excellent job. Other than that, I just want to wish everybody a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving, and look forward to seeing everybody next month. This is the next opportunity for anyone to address the board. And being that I hear silence, I hear crickets in the, in the audience. If there's no other business tonight, I make a motion that we adjourn. And do I have a second?
Second.
Till next time, have a good night, everybody.